Okay, it looks like we got it. Um, just give us one more minute and Esther is going to be giving us the green light. Thank you for your patience.
Are you able to hear me?
Yep, we hear you.
Yes, I can hear you.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, thank you Esther. Um, okay, so perfect. We can go ahead and begin the meeting.
Uh, great. Uh, thank you Ron and Esther. Um, so this is, uh, this is Chris. Um, I guess I'll call the meeting to order. It's, uh, seven oh five P M. Um, this is a regular meeting of the Baldwin Park Planning Commission for June tenth, twenty twenty. Um, pledge of allegiance. Um, Commissioner Grito, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Good evening, everybody. Um, I'll go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. Um, just make sure you keep yourself muted and you can repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Grito. Um, at this time, we're gonna move on to rule call. Madam Secretary, will you please, uh, call roll?
Thank you. Chair Christopher Sines.
President.
Vice Chair Edwin Borkas.
Here.
Commissioner Edith Flores.
Present.
Commissioner Christopher Grito.
Present.
And Commissioner Marlon Garcia. Here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Um, so this time we're gonna move on to public communications. So at this time, um, have we received anything from the public?
Nothing has been submitted, sir.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Um, gonna move on to consent calendar, action minutes for May thirteenth, twenty twenty. Um, I moved to adopt the action minutes.
Mister Chairman, before you do that, that, uh, Robert Tafoya, uh, could you please close out public communications?
Absolutely. Thank you, Robert. So at this time, I'll close public communications and move on to consent calendar. I moved to adopt action minutes for May thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Second, Commissioner Borkas.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Borkas. Uh, Madam Secretary, will you please, um, call roll? Sorry, I wasn't sure if I was on mute. I apologize. Um, so, um, uh, second, uh, Commissioner Borkas, uh, Madam Secretary, would you mind calling roll?
Are you able to hear me?
Ne- now we can.
Oh, thank you. Chair Christopher Sines.
Yes.
Vice Chair Edwin Borkas.
Yes.
Commissioner Edith Flores.
Yes.
Commissioner Christopher Grito.
Yes.
And Commissioner Marlon Garcia. Yes. Thank you.
Action minutes adopted five zero. Thank you, Madam Secretary. So at this time, we're gonna move on to set matters, public hearing. Uh, we have a request for approval of a conditional use permit to allow the construction of two hydrogen dispensers and equipment enclosures in conjunction with an existing service station and convenience store Chevron. Project is located within the C two general commercial zone, location one four four seven seven Merced Avenue. Applicant first element fuel case number CP twenty dash zero six, Ron and Melissa.
Yes, thank you Chairman. Uh, the associate planner Melissa Chipris will be, uh, doing the presentation.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
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 Okay, uh, good evening, Honorable Chair and members of the commission. Uh, this evening you will hear case number CP twenty dash oh six submitted by First Element Fuel to allow the construction of two hydrogen dispensers and equipment enclosure in congen- conjunction with an existing Chevron service station, convenience store, and drive-through car wash. Uh, next slide please. Uh, the proposed project site is located at the intersection of Fuente Avenue and Merced Avenue. The subject site is zoned C two general commercial, is approximately thirty thousand nine hundred and seventy-one square feet and has operated in the city of Baldwin Park as a Chevron state Chevron service station since nineteen ninety-four. Uh, the site is currently equipped with two driveway approaches off Fuente Avenue while maintaining one driveway approach on Merced Avenue. Uh, change the site, please David. Uh, the site currently provides three standard parking stalls and one ADA stall. The subject site also has landscape planters along the east, west, and south property lines. Uh, the drive, drive-through car wash and service station will continue to operate on a twenty-four hour basis with one to two employees per shift. Uh, next slide please. Uh, the first element fuel is requesting appro- an approval of a conditional use permit to allow two hydrogen dispensers and a four hundred and seventy-two point five square foot hydrogen equipment enclosure, both to be located on the westerly portion of the site. Currently, there are four fuel pump islands and eight fuel pumps. The islands and fuel pumps will remain in current configuration and the proposed hydrogen fuel pumps are to be located on the southwestern portion of the site. Uh, next slide please. Uh, the site currently maintains an approximately five hundred and fifty square foot landscape planter along the rear of the property. Uh, the proposed hydrogen equipment enclosure will be directly adjacent, adjacent to that existing, uh, landscape planter. Uh, the proposed enclosure will be thirteen and a half feet wide and thirty-five feet in length and ten feet in height. The enclosure has been designed to fit harmoniously with the existing convenience store and self-service car wash. By integrating stippled textured stucco finish, um, and in order to aesthetically integrate and protect the proposed enclosure. Uh, the applicant is proposing a decorative landscape planter bollards along the front and sides of the proposed hydrogen equipment enclosure. As you can see here, um, as well, uh, with this request, the applicant, um, will also be required to increase parking by one stall, which they will be doing by adding a fifth stall at the southerly end of the site. Uh, next slide please. Oh, and, and before I conclude, I did wanna make note, uh, that staff did make modifications to the provided resolution in your agenda packets. On page four. Uh, condition BB of the resolution has been removed. And also condition EE verbiage has been modified to read as uh, the applicant shall relocate and underground any existing above-ground onsite utilities to the satisfaction of the city engineer and the respective utility owner. Uh, these conditions were removed and modified per the recommendation of public works staff. Uh, so to conclude, staff does recommend that the planning commission approve resolution PC twenty dash fifteen approving CP twenty dash oh six. Thank you. Uh, and the applicant is also present for any questions.
Um, thank you Melissa and Ron. Um, so at this time, um, is there any questions of staff? Um, so at this time, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Um, uh, Madam Secretary, have we received any, uh, communication, um, either in favor or against, um, this project?
None received, sir.
Um, thank you. Um, at this time, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Uh, uh, Commissioners, any questions of the applicant or staff? Uh, great. So, uh, seeing, uh, no questions, I make a motion to adopt the findings of fact um, and adopt resolution PC twenty dash fifteen as amended.
Sorry, Commissioners, really quick, sorry to interrupt. Um, the applicant did, um, want to provide a brief, a brief description, um, in regards to their project.
Perfect. Okay. Uh, so the applicant is ready.
Uh, Mister Chairman, is, is he speaking in favor of the project or is he just doing a presentation?
Uh, a brief presentation.
Okay, okay. Cause if he wants to speak in favor of the project, we need to reopen the public hearing.
Well, let me go ahead and verify with the applicant. Uh, Jackie?
Thank you.
Yes. Uh, we just, we wanted to actually say a few words about First Element and the project, so that would be speaking in favor of the project.
Okay, Mister, Mister Chairman, you'll need a motion, uh, to reopen the public hearing.
Perfect. So at this time, I make a motion to reopen the public hearing. Do we have a second?
All second.
Um, I guess we'll do. Uh, thank you. So I think at this time, we're gonna, uh, make, uh, Madam Secretary, can you call roll?
Yes, uh, uh, before I call roll, two seconds please. Who is the second?
I think it was Commissioner Garcia.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Chair Christopher Sines.
Yes.
Vice Chair Edwin Borkas.
Yes.
Commissioner Edith Flores.
Yes.
Commissioner Christopher Grito.
Yes.
And Commissioner Marlon Garcia. Yes. Thank you.
Great. Uh, motion adopted five zero. The, uh, public hearing is open. Um, go ahead.
Uh, those speaking in favor, you're, you're, you're opening for those speaking in favor, then you'll go the rebuttal again, Mister Chairman.
Absolutely. Thank you. So at this time, we're gonna invite anybody speaking in favor of the projects.
Okay. Hi, this is Jackie Mewich. I'm representing the applicant First Element Fuel. And, uh, I just wanted to introduce, we have here also, uh, the applicant's First Element Fuel's Chief Development Officer Shane Stevens and also the Chief Operating Officer Sam Slimen. And, uh, Shane was just gonna say a few words about First Element, um, what they do and their vision for building out the hydrogen field network. Shane, are you there?
I, I am and I'm unmuted. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry to interject, just, uh, for the record, do you mind stating your name, uh, before, before speaking so that our secretary can get your name down for the record?
Absolutely. So my name is Doctor Shane Stevens and I'm one of the founders of First Element Fuel. And, uh, I apologize to create a little bit of hoopla here to, to make my remarks. We just wanted to introduce ourselves and, and thank you guys. Um, we're a, uh, California-based company. We're actually based in Irvine, California. So, so we're in Orange County and, uh, our, uh, entire, um, operation is dedicated to developing and operating hydrogen fueling stations. Today, we have about twenty open throughout California and we have nineteen more in various stages of development. And that ranges all throughout the state from San Diego through, uh, Orange County where, uh, I think we have the most stations of any, any county and up through LA and, and the Bay Area. Um, I, I don't wanna belabor this too much. Uh, you know, it sounds like we're, uh, on the path for a, a quick hearing here, but, um, you know, we, uh, we're part of a, uh, a movement of zero emission vehicles. This is aligned with California policy. Um, you know, California's been driving the direction of the automobile market for the rest of the world towards cleaner vehicles for the past fifty years. Uh, so we're really proud to be bringing this technology to Baldwin Park. We really appreciate the work uh, of staff in partnership with our team. Wanna thank staff for a great presentation. Um, and, uh, we, uh, you know, we look forward to having a successful project and bringing clean technology to Baldwin Park. Um, you guys are a great market for it. Automakers are clamoring for more stations in Orange County and in the Baldwin Park, uh, region. So, uh, I think this is gonna be a great project and a success and I'm here to answer, uh, any additional questions if you guys, uh, have any. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Um, any additional comments in favor of the project?
Esther?
No comment, sir.
So at, at this time, I'm gonna, uh, invite any of those speaking opposed, uh, to the project. Um, please state your name, um, and you have three minutes. Um, I guess nobody's here. Uh, Esther, did we receive any comments against this project?
None received, sir.
Noted. So at this, um, unless there's anybody that needed to speak, Melissa is, uh, do we have anybody else that needed to speak?
No, I believe that was it.
Perfect. I appreciate it. So at this time, I'm gonna close the public, public hearing and invite, um, our Commissioners, if you have any questions of the applicant, uh, to do so now.
Hi, this is the Commissioner Garcia. I, I, actually for staff. Uh, is this the first station we have of this type or do we have others in the city?
Commissioner Marlon Garcia, uh, this is gonna be the first. I'm not aware of any other hydrogen stations, uh, located, uh, in Baldwin Park.
Okay. Uh, my second question, uh, historically, because when we dealt with gas stations that are no longer in existence, they, uh, they cause a problem because they have, uh, these tanks that are underground and at times they contaminate the ground and it's difficult to remove them. We run into a lot of challenges. Would this, uh, create any type of challenge of that nature in the future if, if this becomes obsolete? Not that I'm saying it is, but just in case.
Good question and, uh, Commissioner, uh, Garcia. Um, I don't, you know, with, it's an above-ground, uh, uh, equipment shelter for the hydrogen pump station.
Uh-huh.
So they would have to potentially say in the future in twenty years from now, uh, they would have to abide by, um, the state regulations when removal of, of fuel storage tanks. Uh, and rent, uh, and also go through any mediation if there's any, uh, any spillage of fuel within the site. Um, I, I don't foresee any future issues with, um, uh, uh, with this station, especially with the specific, uh, hydrogen station. Uh, but again, as I mentioned, um, if this were to close, uh, they would have to strictly abide by LA County Fire, uh, removal of, of fuel storage tanks and also comply with any state, um, toxic, uh, guidelines. But I don't, do not foresee any put significant issues, uh, in the future with this site, given the, the, uh, the requirements by the state.
Okay, I'm gonna keep you to your word, Director. Now, you know, it just said, when I was on council, we dealt with a lot of these old gas stations that were no longer in existence. We had a difficult time promoting the property to potential users for that reason.
Yeah, it is. Good point. Um, I will say that in my experience, those, those fuel stations that are the older ones that, uh, you know, in the forties and the fifties and at that time, there wasn't any requirements for remediation of removal of the tanks. So, but now there's been so much regulation with respect to, uh, uh, fuel tank remediation when gas station, uh, uh, cease operations. Um, that they have to remediate. Um, but I, I am aware that those, there are those older sites that have created, uh, uh, problems.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And that, this is Shane Stevens with First Element. I, I'm not sure what protocol is, but I'm happy to provide some info on this if, if desired.
Uh, yes, please. Um, uh, go ahead. If you can, um, add any insight, be helpful.
Uh, great. Thank you. So, um, uh, staff is correct. Um, you know, there are, uh, guidelines for dealing with hydrogen. The tank is above ground. So, uh, there's that. Uh, but on top of it, hydrogen has actually been around in industry and for refueling applications for a really long time and it's well understood. And the good news is hydrogen has a lot of nice properties. So, um, one is it's not, not toxic at all. Um, and then the other is that it's actually the lightest, uh, substance on the planet. So if, uh, if there ever is an escape, it actually travels upward into the atmosphere, uh, at a rate of sixty-five, uh, feet per second. Uh, and, um, it doesn't react in the atmosphere. So it's not harmful if it does go into the atmosphere. So, um, so there's, there's really no anticipated, you know, toxicity or, or cleanup issues here. Um, you know, and if there were, we would of course, you know, abide by all commissioning regulation, decommissioning regulations if we were able to, uh, ever, uh, had to shut it down.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any additional questions? Uh, great. So, um, at this time, I, I, I do wanna thank, uh, Doctor Shane Stevens and everybody at First Element Fuels to, for uh, bringing this project to our city and helping us, um, I guess, lead in, um, sustainability and, um, um, it's, it's, it's actually a very exciting project, um, to see, um, being proposed in our city. So at this time, I wanna, um, motion to adopt the findings of fact and resolution PC twenty dash fifteen as amended, entitled a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Baldwin Park approving a conditional use permit to allow the construction of two hydrogen dispensers and equipment enclosure in conjunction with an existing service station and convenience store. The project is located within the C two general commercial zone, location one four four seven seven Merced Avenue. Applicant First Element Fuel case number CP twenty dash zero six.
My second, Ed.
Thank you, Commissioner Flores. Um, Madam Secretary, will you please call roll?
Chair Christopher Sines.
Yes.
Vice Chair Edwin Borkas.
Yes.
Committed, Commissioner Edith Flores.
Yes.
Commissioner Christopher Grito.
Yes.
And Commissioner Marlon Garcia.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The findings of fact and resolution PC twenty dash fifteen has been adopted, uh, five zero.
Thank you, Mister Chairs and Commissioners. We look forward to it.
Thank you very much. So at this time, we're gonna move on to public comments. Uh, Madam Secretary, have we received any communication, uh, since we began the meeting?
None has been, no communications have been received, sir.
Great. Thank you very much. So at this time, we're gonna move on to reports of officers.
Yes, thank you, uh, Chairman, members of the commission. So tonight, we have a brief presentation by, uh, Ferrin Perez, a traffic consulting firm uh, on vehicle miles traveled, uh, guidelines. Uh, this is all due to changes in state law uh, that require the city to adopt new, uh, SEQA thresholds of significance for transportation impacts. And so for the purposes of SEQA, uh, these changes will modify how the city evaluates projects for transportation impacts. Uh, so this was, uh, specifically the city is required to use, uh, vehicle miles traveled instead of, uh, uh, level of service, uh, LOS. Um, as a metric to evaluate transportation impacts, uh, in SEQA documents, uh, that you've all have, uh, seen before you with the projects. Analyzing traffic impact. So I'd like to introduce Eric, uh, Rear of Ferrin Pierce and he will go ahead and, uh, provide the presentation.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commission, uh, members. Uh, I'm Eric Ror and I am a transportation engineer. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen because I have a, uh, a few quick slides to show you. Here. Okay, there we go. So, um, I'm gonna be talking about Senate Bill S, uh, seven forty-three or SB seven forty-three. And, um, as Ron mentioned, this is a change in the way that, uh, transportation studies are gonna be done for SEQA. And, um, as I mentioned, I'm just gonna do a, um, a quick, um, presentation here. So, uh, this is, uh, an idea of what I wanna talk about. I wanna talk about what is SB seven forty-three? What is vehicle miles traveled or VMP, which is gonna be the new performance measure for transportation studies? And then what are we considering, um, uh, for the city of Baldwin Park? We're considering the methodology for calculating VMP thresholds of sig- uh, significance for SEQA and screening criteria, meaning, uh, which projects, uh, would have to do a VMP analysis and which projects would be screened out and and a VMP analysis would not be required. So I'm talking about the timeline for SB seven forty-three. It was signed way back in, uh, twenty thirteen. Um, by the governor. It was passed by the legislature, signed by the governor in twenty thirteen. It took five years, uh, to, uh, prepare guidelines, an agency called the Evers Office of Planning and Research or OPR was designated by the legislature to write guidelines. It took five years because this is a a fairly big change and it's fairly controversial. So it took, uh, time to get it right. But at the end of, uh, twenty eighteen, the Natural Resources Agency adopted, um, updated SEQA guidelines and and designated, uh, July first, twenty twenty as the required implementation. They give, gave a little time of the time that the, uh, the, the, um, that SB seven forty-three was incorporated into SEQA, did, for everyone to get ready before, uh, July first, twenty twenty implementation date. The intent to the, uh, legislation just broadly is to, uh, balance the needs of congestion management with, um, statewide goals. Three goals here, infill development, encourage infill development, to quote, public health through active transportation, which is walking and biking, and then reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So this changes the, um, methodology for transportation studies done under SEQA. It eliminates, uh, level of service of SEQA performance measure or SEQA metric for traffic impacts. Level of service, um, is still important and can be analyzed, but just not as a SEQA, uh, performance measure and it won't create significant impacts under SEQA. And what replaces level service is vehicle miles traveled and basically vehicle miles traveled is And basically, vehicle miles traveled is um, the number of vehicles and the, the length that they're traveling. So if you, if you multiply those together, you get vehicles miles traveled. The um, and instead of looking at um, in a SEQA transportation study, instead of looking at uh, traffic congestion at intersections, we'll be looking at how many uh, vehicle miles of travel that a, a project generates. So how many vehicles and how far they travel. So in um, uh, it, there is statewide guidance uh, that has been um, prepared. But it leaves some gaps and some decisions to be made locally. So what we've done um, in the studies that we're doing are to provide uh, methodologies and threshold guidance for the city of Baldwin Park. We're gonna talk about um, what changes would happen um, to um, cause different significant impacts under this change. And then what mitigation measures would occur. And all this is uh, it's a lot of details of um, what we're gonna be doing and I'm kind of giving a brief overview. So how does a city comply with SB seven forty-three? Adopt new traffic impact thresholds of significance. So that will be uh, the, the city council one week from today will consider that. Um, publish uh, traffic impact study guidelines with screening criteria and uh, VNT analysis methodology and, and thresholds. And um, in the future, um, once this takes effect, um, you will analyze vehicle miles traveled or VMT for all projects. Uh, first you'll uh, calculate the project VMT. Care, uh, compare it to the threshold to determine um, does the project generate too much uh, VMT compared to the threshold? If it does exceed the threshold, uh, you're gonna note that there's an impact. And then um, identify mitigation to reduce VMT below a level of significance. Uh, generally, the VMT mitigation measures will be different from the level service mitigation measures. Level service mitigation measures might be things like installing traffic signals or turn lanes. Under VMT, you're trying to reduce the amount of trips and the length of trips. Um, so things like um, encouraging people to take transit, encouraging people to walk, encouraging people to use bicycles. Those are the kinds of uh, mitigation measures that we're gonna be seeing. And I, I want to emphasize that um, we're still gonna be analyzing uh, level service. It just won't be a, a SEQA significant impact. And that also, just like under level service, if a um, if a VNT study identifies an impact and it's not able to be mitigated, uh, you can certainly do a statement of overriding considerations. So with that, I am available for any uh, questions that you might have.
Commissioners, any questions?
No questions.
Well, thank you very much for that presentation. Um, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. I also uh, thank you, Eric, so much uh, for your assistance. I also like to add and let the commission know that um, uh, along with Baldwin Park, uh, there are twenty-five other cities in the San Gabriel Valley uh, that joined in um, this effort and Ferrin Pierce uh, was uh, integral in assisting the, the, the San Gabriel Valley COG in complying with this uh, new uh, change. Uh, and again, as you mentioned, effective July first, twenty twenty. Um, I was told that uh, we are the only uh, group of cities in California that have successfully been able to accomplish uh, uh, this, this uh, this task uh, uh, to be able to comply with that July first, twenty twenty uh, deadline. So thank you again, Eric, uh, for all your help on this. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Robert.
Um, uh, uh, um, Ron, you explained to me uh, when we were having our meeting and preparing for this, how uh, this uh, new change is gonna really benefit Baldwin Park in terms of its development and streamlining its development as it relates to uh, SEQA and traffic impact studies. Could you explain that to the commission?
Oh, yes. Good point, Robert. Thank you for uh, for that. Yeah. So with this vehicle miles traveled, um, what it's gonna do is depending on the area, and again, because we're close to transit, uh, we have the MetroLink station, we have other alternative modes of, of, of transportation, uh, uh, you know, we have buses, we also have the uh, the Baldwin Park tram. Um, all those will contribute whether a, a development will be screened out of having to uh, analyze a project for, for traffic. So essentially, vehicle miles traveled. So uh, as I was explaining to the city attorney, uh, this is gonna be a cost-saving measure for uh, developers uh, in having to uh, spend uh, 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 on extensive traffic analysis. Uh, so that's going to help um, with streamlining development within the city.
So developments, uh, so, uh, Ron, so developments within areas that are serviced. So I, I guess um, um, I don't know, if something were to come up across the street from the MetroLink station, that project would benefit from the MetroLink in reducing, I guess, the V, uh, VMT um, versus something that is, I don't know, um, in dead center of the city that isn't serviced by any um, metro, any um, bus line.
Correct.
Got it.
That is correct. So then those projects uh, would then have to uh, go through a, a VMT analysis.
Got it.
Yes.
So certainly, um, very uh, interesting information. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Chairman, uh, this is Robert again. It's any uh, it's any uh, development within a half a mile. Uh, so that, that of, of any transit station. And what this allows us to do, because we were one of the only cities to do this, we didn't have this VMT. We would have to be doing a lot of traffic studies that we wouldn't otherwise do. So by adopting this and by uh, Ron and the uh, uh, departments um, uh, getting this for us right away before a lot of other cities had it, we will have a strategic advantage as it relates to development and the developers will see that.
Got it. Thank you. And that's uh, that's, was it half a mile or a quarter mile from um, public tran- public transit? Ron?
A half mile.
Half mile. Yeah, noted. Thank you.
Ron, this is Commissioner Garrido. When does this go into effect again?
So per state law, we have to have the VMT thresholds adopted before July first. And so uh, as I mentioned, uh, you know, Baldwin Park and twenty-five other cities in the San Gabriel Valley are also uh, uh, in our same position. They'll be adopting uh, this week and next week. Um, their thresholds to be in compliance with the July first uh, twenty twenty deadline.
Okay, so right around the corner then, for sure.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Noted. Um, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, so uh, Ron, um, I guess uh, do we have any additional reports of officers?
Yes, I have a couple more items. Um, I just want to let the commission know that uh, the city council approved uh, the contract, the order contract to Runwall Associates uh, to update the downtown TOD specific plan. Uh, so staff's really excited. Um, we're gonna need the commission, uh, also the city council, the community to take part uh, in this endeavor. Um, so I will be notifying the planning commission and their participation um, as we move forward with this. Our antit- uh, anticipated completion date for the downtown TOD plan would be uh, uh, sometime October of next year. Uh, so there's a lot of work that we're gonna be doing uh, to get this plan uh, uh, completed. Uh, and, and uh, exciting uh, about what's to come uh, after that. Uh, the other item, uh, wanted to let the planning commission know is that staff's in the process of applying for another grant uh, through the Department of uh, Housing and Community Development uh, for three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and that, those monies would be used to uh, essentially revise uh, sections of the mixed-use zoning standards. And so as we go through the exercise of updating the downtown specific plan, um, it's gonna um, uh, essentially mirror what we develop in the downtown for mixed use in other areas of the city that are zoned for mixed use. So that way, we don't have uh, uh, different uh, standards. They should all uh, essentially marry each other, complement each other. Uh, in addition to that, those monies would also help comply with uh, SB thirty-five, which is objective uh, design standards, which is required by state law, uh, which would essentially streamline uh, affordable housing projects. Uh, and, and again, that would help uh, the city meet those guidelines and also provide the city uh, uh, a competitive advantage and seeking further uh, grants uh, in the future. Um, so really excited about uh, that effort. And so that grant uh, will, will go until twenty twenty-three. So we're gonna be significantly busy with the downtown plan, getting that adopted in twenty twenty-one and then moving forward with uh, some revisions uh, uh, to twenty twenty-three. So you can see we have a lot of work to do. Um, also, uh, would like to uh, thank uh, our planning intern, uh, Rogelio Bice. Uh, today was his last day. Uh, he's a UCLA grad. Wanna congratulate him and his wife. Uh, they're going to grad school and they're moving to San Francisco. Uh, Rogelio uh, volunteered with our planning division uh, non-paid. Uh, he actually made some uh, job changes so that way he can uh, increase his time uh, volunteering here in the planning division. And because of that, it looks like he's, wants to pursue a logic, uh, a, go to law school and pursue uh, to be a SEQA attorney. So I'm really excited about him and I want to wish him the best of luck and uh, thank him for all his service and dedication uh, that he gave us uh, this year in the planning division. And lastly, uh, want to let the commission know that we uh, don't anticipate having a meeting uh, for uh, the next June, which is uh, June twenty-fourth and also July uh, eighth. So I will keep the planning commission uh, uh, I will notify the planning commission if it seems that we will have a second meet, a uh, a planning commission meeting on the twenty-second. Uh, but that ends all my comments. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, thanks, Ron. So I wanted to uh, address a couple of things. I'm uh, obviously wanted to congratulate you and your team for securing that original grant. Um, and we look forward to all the exciting updates um, that uh, that grant funding um, and the, the studies that come out of it will bring to uh, our city. Uh, wishing you best of luck in securing the, the next grants. Um, and then also, I don't know if on behalf of the planning commission, you can um, thank Rogelio for his service and wish him the best of luck in his future endeavors. Um, lastly, want to thank you for looking into that conditional use permit that I had emailed you about. Um, yeah, I, I was uh, as I was driving, um, as I was driving down Main, um, I'm kind of like excited about the, I guess, the street improvement project. And I know that that's kind of like the, that, that um, I guess Olive Square Market is kind of the gateway into our city. So I was hoping that that project was still kind of gonna come alive, but it's uh, kind of sad to hear that um, I guess, nothing, no- nothing ever came of that project. Um, um, and so, but thank you very much for looking uh, for looking into it for me.
Oh, my.
Sorry for interrupting you, Ron. Yeah, but thank you, thank you. I really appreciate it. Cause uh, um, as I was driving through, somebody had asked me if there was anything that, that was happening with that. And I know that I think it was like a year and a half ago, they had proposed, or maybe even two years ago, had proposed putting a restaurant and um, I guess it never came to life.
Yeah, it was uh, actually it was uh, I s- I think it was a month after I first started here. Uh, we were working with them and we got notification that they weren't gonna, they weren't gonna.
Got it. Yeah, well, but thank you again for looking, um, looking into it for me.
My pleasure.
Um, Commissioners, any additional questions? See none. Um, at this time, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. Is that Commissioner Flores?
Yes.
Perfect. Uh, Madam Secretary, will you please call roll?
Chair Christopher Stein?
Yes.
Vice Chair Edwin Borcas?
Yes.
Commissioner Edith Flores?
Yes.
Commissioner Christopher Garrido?
Yes.
And Commissioner Marlin Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned, seven forty-seven. Viva Baldwin Park. Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Esther. Melissa, all the staff making this meeting possible tonight. Have a great night and be safe.
Have a good night and viva Baldwin Park.
Viva Baldwin Park.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.